Good evening, everybody. Just a few introductions and opening remarks before we get started. First off, I just want to introduce our committees here that are in front of the podium. To our far left, we have the Finance Committee. In the center, we have the School Committee and Administrators. And in the table right in front of me, we have the Board of Selectmen. The Town Administrator, Mr. Rick LaFawn, will be at the podium. And my name is Ted Avalos. I'll be your moderator. To my left is Carol Marshon. She's handling our IT. To my right, Bill Hewitt, our Town Council. And to my right, the Town Clerk, Bob Crader. In addressing town meeting, we have microphones located in both aisles for residents to speak. When approaching the microphone, the proper procedure is to address the moderator as Mr. Moderator, who will then recognize you. Please respond with your full name and residential address when speaking. All questions and statements are to be addressed to the moderator, and the moderator will then request a response from an appropriate part. Our committees tonight do not have microphones at their tables. I would ask that the Chairman can use a podium if they wish to speak on behalf of their committees or they designate, should they designate a member of the committee to speak. Committee members wishing to speak as individuals should use the two microphones in the aisles assigned for residents. Moderator tonight will present each article. I ask that you don't make any motions to dispense with the reading, as the moderator will summarize as needed. Once an article has been read, the moderator will call for a motion, and it's customary for the sponsor of the article to make that motion. Upon the motion, a second must be made to allow any discussion. Anyone made second a motion by simply stating "second." Once a motion has been seconded, the moderator will open the article up for a discussion. The sponsor will be the first to speak. Once they are finished with their opening statement, the moderator will ask for any further discussion, and this is where the voters' opportunity to speak will be presented. Voters seeking to be recognized should line up behind the microphones. Time for discussion will be at discretion of the moderator. Limit your questions or comments to the article presented, and it is my intention to let everyone who wishes to speak do so. If at any time the moderator feels questions or comments are simply repetitive or not relative to the article, the conversation will be halted. Once discussion has been completed, the moderator will call for a vote. The system for voting will be by electronic device. All registered voters receive the device when they enter the auditorium. When asked to vote, please do so by entering 1A for a yes vote or 2B for a no vote. If you make a mistake voting, you may re-enter a vote by pressing the appropriate number. You can press those buttons all you want, but your device will only record the last choice you made before voting was closed. So, let's do a test. We have a test question. This is on pumpkin spice abuse. Should pumpkin spice flavors be banned from all coffee shops in Webster?
Yes.
You may vote. 1A for yes, 2B for no. The time for voting having expired, we'll post the results. The numbers are... Forty-three yes, twenty-five no. You will no longer be able to have pumpkin spice in the town of Webster. Alright. Let us begin. It being after seven o'clock on this day, October 30th, 2023, and a quorum being presented, I call the annual town meeting to order. At this time, I would just ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance I have a couple of motions that I'll put together and I'll ask for a voice vote on these. They're moderators' motions. Number one, the moderator moves the town votes to dispense with the reading of the warrant. And two, the moderator moves that the moderator may extend the floor to town management and staff and other non-voters, provided that they must be recognized by the moderator. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Pass. Article one, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $3,800,000 for the purpose of water meter replacement and AMI project and all related and incidental costs. And that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said sum under MGL Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8 and/or any other enabling authority and to issue bonds and notes thereof or to take any action thereon. Article one is sponsored by the Water Sewer Commission. The Water Sewer Commission and Board of Selectmen and FINCOM have recommended favorable action on this article. And because it is a borrowing article, it will take a two-thirds vote to pass. Mr. Town Administrator?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate $3,800,000 for the purpose of the water meter replacement and advanced meter infrastructure project and all related and incidental costs. And that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, be authorized to borrow said sum under MGL Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8 and/or any other enabling authority and to issue bonds and notes therefore.
We have a motion and a second. We'll open it up for discussion. Tom Martin?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, this is intended to replace the current water meters in town. Right now, the system is losing about 26% of all water, even after repairs. The explanation in the book is, I think, quite descriptive. So, I would defer to our Water Sewer Superintendent if there are specific questions on this.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we're prepared to put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article one, press 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Again, it's a two-thirds vote required for passage. Voting is now open. The time for voting having expired, we'll now post the results. Fifty-four yes, nineteen no, seventy-four percent. And the affirmative, Article, the motion for Article one passes. Article two, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $1,500,000 for the purpose of the Route 16 water main project and all related and incidental costs. And to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said sum under MGL Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8 and/or any other enabling authority and to issue bonds and notes therefore or to take any action thereon. Article two is sponsored by the Water Sewer Commission, the Water Sewer Commission, the Board of Selectmen, and the Finance Committee. All recommend favorable action on this article. Again, being a borrowing article, it will require two-thirds vote for passage. Town Administrator?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate $1,500,000 for the purpose of the Route 16 water main construction project and all related and incidental costs. And that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, be authorized to borrow said sum under MGL Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8 and/or any other enabling authority and to issue bonds and notes therefore.
Aye.
We have a motion and a second. We'll open it up for discussion.
Mr. Moderator, real quick, in the background, in the guide, you can see the town is currently designing the water main replacement on Route 16. In fact, this body appropriated $150,000 at the spring annual town meeting to get this project moving. Again, any other specific questions, I would defer to our Water Sewer Superintendent.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we're prepared to put Article two to a vote. All those in favor, 1A. All those opposed, 2B. And again, it's a two-thirds vote required for passage. Voting is now open. Time for voting having expired, we'll post the results. Sixty-seven yes, seven no. Ninety-one percent of passage. The motion to approve Article two passes. Article three, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $3,000,000 for the purpose of the North Main Street and Upland Ave water main project and all related and incidental costs. And that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said sum under MGL Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8 and/or any other enabling authority and to issue bonds and notes therefore or to take any action thereon. Article three is sponsored by the Water Sewer Commission. The Water Sewer Commission, Board of Selectmen, and Finance Committee recommend favorable action on this article. Again, it's being a borrowing article. It will require a two-thirds vote for passage. Town Administrator?
I move that the town appropriate $3,000,000 for the purpose of the North Main Street and Upland Ave water main construction project and all related and incidental costs. And that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, be authorized to borrow said sum under MGL Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8 and/or any other enabling authority and to issue bonds and notes therefore.
We have a motion and a second. We'll open it up for discussion.
Mr. Moderator, the background here is fairly clear. The design is completed. And once again, this is something the town has already paid for in order to do this project. Town is invested in this already.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to put Article three to a vote. All those in favor of Article three, press 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Again, this is a two-thirds vote required for passage. Voting is now open. Time for voting having expired, we'll post the results. Sixty-eight yes, eight no. That's eighty-nine percent approval. The motion passes. Article four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer a sum sufficient to purchase and install security cameras and associated networking and computer equipment and any other costs incidental or related thereto at the Webster Animal Shelter located at Memorial Beach or take any other action thereon. Article four is sponsored by the Police Department, the Board of Selectmen, and the Finance Committee recommend favorable action on this article.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash $16,000 for purposes stated in Article four.
We have a motion and a second. We'll open it for discussion. Town Administrator?
Many are aware that we've recently gone to great lengths to update, upgrade our animal shelter. It is now under the functional and operational control of the Police Department. And what we don't have there are operable cameras, security cameras. This would actually put security cameras in place commercial grade, which can be monitored directly by the Police Department.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to move on Article four. All those in favor, press 1A. All those opposed, 2B. This is a simple majority vote for passage. Voting is now open. Time for voting having expired, we'll now post the results. Sixty-six yes, thirteen no. The motion to pass Article four passes. Article five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer a sum sufficient to purchase and install public safety boat docks at Memorial Beach to include docks, fencing, security cameras, equipment storage container, and associated networking equipment and any other costs incidental or related thereto or take any action thereon. Article five is sponsored by the Police Department and the Fire Department. The Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee recommend favorable action on this article.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash and from bond premium receipts reserved for appropriation for purposes stated in Article five.
We have a motion and a second. We'll open it up for discussion. Town Administrator?
Mr. Moderator, this would provide funding to install a docking system for public safety emergency boats that currently doesn't exist. And the public safety agencies have to rely upon private docks. This would obviously make it more, allow our public safety departments to respond more favorably in order to meet their requirements out there. It would also allow for nearly year-round access.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to put Article five to a vote. All those in favor, 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Voting is now open. Time for voting having expired, we'll now post the results. Sixty-two yes, seventeen no. The motion to approve Article five passes. Article six, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Webster general bylaws, Chapter 488, Parks and Public Lands, by adding a new section, 488-3, Memorial Beach Rules and Regulations as follows. And in your handouts, you will have the new section, 488-3, as written, along with the recommended amounts and new language. And to further amend the Town of Webster general bylaws, Chapter 308, Alcoholic Beverages, Section 308-2, violations and penalties by replacing the struck-through language with the new underlying language as follows. And there you have the amended Town Webster bylaw, Chapter 308. Or take any action thereon. Article six is sponsored by the Webster Police Department. The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action on this article. Do not have a recommendation from FINCOM, from what I see. Mr. Town Administrator?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve Article six as presented.
Motion and a second. We'll open it up for discussion. Town Administrator?
Currently, we don't have a formal system for approving or setting, promulgating rules and regulations at Memorial Beach. One could concur, or we could all probably concur that we would expect the Board of Selectmen would be making such rules. However, there's no process that's formalized. So, this would formalize the jurisdiction over rules and regulations from Memorial Beach. The other piece here regarding fines, violation of $50 is not the least bit sufficient to actually compel compliance. Most people, or a lot of people, particularly from outside of Webster, would be more than happy to pay $50 if they happen to get caught rather than get the season or otherwise passes they need.
Do any other discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote on Article six. All those in favor, 1A. All those opposed, 2B. The time for voting is now open. Time for voting having expired, we'll now post the results. Seventy-four yes, five no. The motion to approve Article six passes. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Webster general bylaws, Chapter 302, Alarm Systems, by deleting Section 302-5 Connection Fee and to further amend Section 302-3 by removing the struck-through language and replace it with the underlying language. And in your handouts, you have the section in print as written. And to further amend the Town Webster general bylaws, Chapter 260, Enforcement, Non-Criminal Disposition, Section 260-2, Non-Criminal Disposition by amending the following row by removing the struck-through language. And again, in your handouts, you have the recommended language. Or take any action thereon. Article seven sponsored by the Webster Police and Fire Departments. Mr. Town Administrator?
I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Webster general bylaws, Chapter 302, Alarm Systems by deleting Section 302-5 Connection Fee and to further amend Section 302-3 by removing the struck-through language and replacing with the underlying language. Would you like me to read the specific language or be happy to leave it alone? Not necessary? Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
At the moment, the alarms that the Police and Fire Department have to respond to can be excessive from alarms that have not, well, usually businesses that are not fixing or having their alarms maintained appropriately. Currently, it's a $20 fee for every offense. What you see in the warrant here is a proposed graduated fee, which starts with a warning and then progresses from there in a way that actually might keep our businesses from not maintaining their systems. This is another situation where a $20 fee fine is not the least bit sufficient for any violator to take appropriate action. You might look at this and say the graduated fee structure might be a little excessive. We don't think so, but in any events, after one year, if there's no further offenses, the progressive discipline, so to speak, would go back to step one. So, it's not intended to be the least bit punitive, merely try to compel compliance, which is not happening right now with the current penalty structure.
Mr. Moderator, vote for a vote. Have these gone through the Bylaw Committee?
Yes, they have.
Thank you.
Discussion. Thank you.
I'm Elaine Davis, and I live at 267 Thompson Road. As I look at the bylaw, this graduated schedule puts us more in line with Oxford and a number of the other towns I know that have this type of an alarm system. And I'll be honest, my alarm has gone off and the police have come. I've been embarrassed, so I'm sorry, chief. But the comment I want to make is when the town does its bylaw review, and I hope, hopefully soon, take a look at the whole bylaw. It's 32 years old. And technology changes. And I wonder how many of us with false alarm systems have gone to both the police chief and the fire chief and given them free contacts and phone numbers? And if we did 32 years ago, are those people still alive and are they using their landlines?
Thank you. Any other discussion? I will note, and I thank the Chairman for the request that the Bylaw Committee has met on Articles 6, 7, and 8. They had one minor edit in Article 6, which the Administrator has corrected. And other than that, there were no other issues noted for these articles. Hearing no other discussion, we're going to put Article 7 to a vote. All those in favor, press 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Time for voting is now open. Time for voting having expired, we'll now post the results. Sixty-seven yes, eleven no. The motion to approve Article 7 passes. Article 8, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Webster general bylaws, Chapter 260, Enforcement, Non-Criminal Disposition, Section 260-2, Non-Criminal Disposition by replacing the following rows. And in your handouts, you have the language, several rows, with amounts for each. Or take any action thereon. Article 8 is sponsored by the Webster Police Department. The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action on this article. Town Administrator?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 8 as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
You can see that the fee structure has been a little more conducive, we'll say, to actually trying to compel behavior on the lake. We've had, and we still do get, a lot of complaints about behavior. This past year, the town didn't put additional resources into the Harbor Master budget for the purposes of more control on the lake. So, we're trying to do what we can in response to many of the complaints. And the thoughts of our public safety departments is that the current fee structure is not sufficient at the moment.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to put Article 8 to a vote. All those in favor, 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Voting is now open. Time for voting having expired. Time for voting having expired will now post the results. Seventy-two, yes. Seven, no. The motion to approve Article eight pass. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to A. Raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds and/or borrow the sum of six hundred and ten thousand dollars and to meet that appropriation to authorize the treasurer with approval of the selectmen per NGL chapter forty-four, section seven, and/or any enabling authority to borrow said sum for the purpose of planning, designing, improving, renovating May Street Park, including, without limitation, all costs incidental or related thereto, providing, however, that no funds shall be expended until the Town of Webster has received a grant commitment or allocation for a portion of such costs under the so-called Park Grant Program and/or any other federal and/or other state program for the foregoing project. And further, to B. Authorize the Board of Selectmen and its designated need to apply for and accept on behalf of the town funds granted under the Park Grant Program and/or any other funds, gifts, grants under federal and/or state programs in any way connected with the scope of this article, and to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary or convenient to effectuate the said project on behalf of the Town of Webster, or take any action thereon. Article nine is sponsored by the town administrator. The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action on this article. And because of the borrowing article, it is a two-thirds vote required for passage. Towne Administrator.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer the funds approved at the special town meeting on May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, Article thirteen, in the amount of one hundred and five thousand dollars, and appropriate four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for the purpose of the Park Grant Project and all related and incidental costs. And that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen be authorized to borrow said sum under NGL chapter forty-four, section seven and eight, and/or any other enabling authority into issued bonds and notes therefor.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator, this is, well, first of all, let me tell you what the park needs. It's parkland acquisitions and renovations for communities. It's a state program. Right now, the town has already appropriated a number of funds that can be moved to this project. The four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, it will be hopefully part of the grant that the town has applied for. And pending a public announcement by the state, we have very reason to believe that the town has been successful in our application, which I give credit to our wonderful park and rec director, who happens to be doing double duty this evening. The full amount does have to be appropriated because it is a reimbursement grant. So the full six hundred and ten thousand dollars needs to be appropriated by the town. However, as you can see here, only one hundred and five thousand dollars is actual town funds from the general fund.
Discussion. Yes.
Just my opinion about Peter Spatter, I've been acting through Street.
Thank you.
Um, I'm, um, um, me and my friend, I've ordered a day that I'm very glad about. It makes my life.
That is.
I'm actually doing a lot of shit. And, and that's me, um, although I go to the Federal Water Park, um, so it's been very good shape. Anyways, it's a very good shape. Um, okay, so I've been out of five people. We go there like whenever it's not raining. Um, she probably said going to the park, I have a better plan to other, which people want to go there for two years. Um, it's in much shape and it's a thing that happens a reason.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you.
Um, you should be the park. I've been there for almost thirteen years. It's been a problem for those thirteen years. Drug use, gang use, graffiti, fights. We've had a kidnapping a couple of years ago. So my concern is putting all this money into a park that would be great for the kids, but what are we going to do to protect it, that the kids are actually safe while they're there? You know, we're putting up cameras for dogs, but we're not going to put up cameras for kids.
I actually, so Mike Shaw, Police Chief, I actually had a conversation with Carol Marsh on the Recreation Director, and she was deciding whether I want to put it for this grant. And I was a hundred percent for it. In speaking, that was some of the concerns we had, you know, obviously, putting cameras down there would be great, but cameras come with a cost. We talked about maybe doing some physical security, cutting some brush back, making it more visible, having more of an awareness down there. That's a part that's very well used by a lot of people because of the thickly settled nature of the neighborhood that it's in. So it's something that we're going to work with Recreation Director to address those problems and have more of a presence down there and continue to patrol
Like this, so when you say more presence, police presence will be going there more?
Yes.
I just want to see you send the money and then it's just what it is today.
That's a valid argument. We have our camera trail we put down there. We had some technical difficulties with that because now it's a few years old, so we've had some warranty issues that we're addressing. It's taken a lot longer to repair, just given the nature of the way things are in the world. But we put that down there for that summer shortly after that kidnapping, if you remember. And, you know, I agree, you bring up some very valid points. And that was a good discussion that I had with Carol about this, but we decided to go forward for this, for that reason, because that part, those kids are not even going to need that place.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. So we need to see it the way it is today.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
No, I just wanted to give credit to Carol Marsh on the Recreation Director for submitting this grant, which, as I mentioned, seems to be in very good standing with the state pending a public announcement. We have a reason to believe that will be successful. Just a typographical error in my recommended motion refers to the special town meeting on May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. That's actually May ninth, two thousand and twenty-two for the Town Court record.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to put Article nine with the correction to a vote. All those in favor, one A. All those opposed, two B. This is a two-thirds required vote. Thank you. Voting is now open. Time for voting having expired will now post the results. Seventy-two, yes. Eleven, no. Seventy-three, yes. Eleven, no. The motion to approve Article nine passes. At this time, before we head into Article ten, I'm going to have to recuse myself as I am a member of the sponsor for Article ten. Deputy Adam Obolus has been sworn in, and he will moderate this article.
Article ten, to see if the town will vote to amend chapter three hundred and twenty-nine, building, construction, demolition, the Town of Webster general bylaws, by adding to chapter three hundred and twenty-nine dash two, the following text. The complete text of the bylaw is in your handouts. Article ten is sponsored by the Webster Historical Commission. The Board of Selectmen recommends approval of Article ten. Is there a motion? Yes.
I make a motion to approve Article ten as presented.
I have a motion and a second. We will open for discussion.
Uh, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Ted Allen, I'm the chairman of the Webster Historical Commission. I have a simple slide presentation that I'd like to present for this article. I can begin by just stating, as irreplaceable significant historic and cultural resources have been threatened or destroyed, advocates for their preservation have organized, voiced their concern, and worked tirelessly to protect them. Today, a network of local commissions, local and state nonprofit organizations, and state government agencies work to assure that historic resources remain an integral part of our cities and towns while allowing for growth and change and new patterns of development. Joined by a small group of concerned citizens, the Webster Historical Commission was recently reactivated after a more than thirty-year absence. The mission of the commission is to preserve the rich heritage of the Town of Webster for future generations by identifying historic resources, encouraging preservation, and adaptive reuse, advocating for preservation bylaws where needed, and educating the public about the history of the town and the importance of historic preservation. This bylaw is proposed for the purpose of preserving and protecting historically significant buildings, structures, and neighborhoods within our town, and to limit the detrimental effect of demolition on the character of our town. A preservation bylaw can be a very effective tool in helping to protect historically significant resources in the community. While a preservation bylaw alone cannot stop demolitions, the opportunity of delaying is of a significant resource can have, often have a positive outcome. So what is the commission looking to determine? If the structure is listed or a subject of a pending application for a national register of historic places, or the building is associated with one or more historic or prominent persons, or events, or with the architectural, cultural, political, economic, or social history of a town or of the commonwealth, or the building is a building historically or architecturally important either by itself or in a group. Procedure is fairly simple. The building commissioner receives a request for demolition. If the structure is over fifty years old, the commissioner will provide the owner with an application for the Webster Historical Commission. If the structure is under fifty years old, no application is required, and the demo permit may be issued. If an application is required, the building commissioner will forward it to the Webster Historical Commission. If the commission determines the structure is not historically significant, a demo permit may be issued. Should the commission determine the building is significant, then no demo permit may be issued. The Webster Historical Commission will hold a public hearing to decide whether the structure should be preserved. If after the public hearing, the commission determines the building is not preferably preserved, the commission will notify the building commissioner, and a demo permit may be issued. If after the public hearing, the commission determines the building is preferably preserved, then no demo permit is issued, no building permit issued for a period, maximum period of eighteen months. During the delay period, the owner, the Historical Commission, and other town departments will work together collaboratively to find a common solution, such as incorporating a building into future site development, adaptive reuse, or seeking a person or group willing to purchase, preserve, rehabilitate, move, or reserve the building or structure. During the delay period, if the commission determines that the intent purpose of the bylaw is served even with the issuance of the demo or building permit, the building commissioner may issue a permit. Following the maximum eighteen-month delay period, the building commissioner may issue a permit. We've had several success stories in the Town of Webster. The first building in Webster to house high school classes was erected in eighteen fifty-four, near the present-day corners of Slater and East Main, which was known then as the Four Corners. The high school kept these quarters until eighteen seventy, when it was destroyed by fire. Soon afterwards, a group purchased suitable land in the South Village section of the town from Samuel Slater and Sons and began construction. The building was constructed true to its original design of granite and brick trimmer. The building has a cupola on the roof in early days, but it was removed at an unknown date. The new high school was opened in eighteen seventy-one and used until nineteen oh five, when a newer high school was opened. The school's name, Rock Castle, came about after eighteen eighty-eight, when a high school student, Gertrude Brown, suggested the name Rock Chronicle for the school's first newspaper. Afterward, the townspeople and students alike began to call the school the Rock Castle, a name which is still used to this day. It was last used as a school, as a vocational school by the Vocational Department of Bartlett High School until the seventies. In nineteen eighty-five rehabilitation as part of the Secretary of the Interior's Assistant Preservation Program. One of the most handsome school buildings still in use for housing in Webster today, Thompson School on Prospect Street, built in eighteen twelve. The brick building began in twelve, finished in the early part of thirteen. Upon the building's completion, it was dedicated to Dr. John Thompson, a local physician and member of the school community. Nineteen oh seven and nineteen sixteen was also on the school's building community. The building started being a school in nineteen eighty and was successfully converted to housing during the eighties. Bartlett High School, originally built in nineteen oh five, expanded when the town hall was constructed in nineteen twenty-eight. The building in nineteen thirteen was renamed Bartlett High School in honor of Captain Anis Bartlett. Bartlett was a captain of the Fifteenth Mass Regiment during the Civil War, also a teacher in the old Webster High School of Selectmen and honored citizen in the turn of the century west. In twenty-eight, the building was radically changed to a style harmonious with the new municipal building. Some of the more extensive alterations were the raising of the roof, removal of the clock tower, and the direct attachment of the high school to the municipal building via an auditorium and an entirely new west wing. With the building of our new high school in nineteen seventy-nine, it became a middle school, and it closed in two thousand and five with the new Webster Middle School construction. It was successfully converted after that closing and is now used for elderly housing. It also houses the Webster Senior Center and the school's old gymnasium. There are also some not-so-successful stories. The land upon which this house was built was acquired in eighteen forty-three by Ebenezer Ames. Sladers were in the habit of selling land to employees, and it is known that the house appears on the eighteen fifty-five map of Webster. Sorry, this is a success story. It has been beautifully preserved as a business office on East Main Street. The old Webster Vice and Savings Bank. The old Webster Bicentennial Savings Bank. It was built in 1954 and continued at a bank until 2010. It was sold and now holds houses a popular restaurant in the downtown section. Although East Main Street has seen a tremendous change in the last 60 years to a more commercially developed area, there are still structures that have been beautifully preserved and put into use today, a reminder of what once was East Main Street. There are structures today that have been closed and are being preserved or reused. St. Anne's School. Again, St. Anne's School, uh, closed recently. Webster Historical Commission was provided a tour of the facility with a developer who's looking to reverse the building into office spaces, using the grant money and tax incentives provided to accomplish the preservation. Then there are some not so successful. This house was built in 1988 for Dr. F. Exboe, a beautiful Victorian-style house with a brick ceiling tile roof. It was demolished and a business practice now occupies the site. The land upon which this house is situated is on the intersection of Slater and East Main, which was, on April 20th, it was built next to the old town hall. And sold to Joseph Ross, who built the home. This, this structure was demolished and is now occupied by an auto repair shop and convenience store. Erection of a new schoolhouse was started in the fall of 1898 and completed in 99. It was named after, named Filmer School in the honor of the Reverend Thomas Filmer, who was a leading citizen of Webster during the latter quarter of the 19th century. He was pastor of the nearby First Baptist Church, and for nearly 30 years as a member of the school committee for 20. This elementary school makes a statement about Webster's municipal purpose at the end of the 19th century. Classically designed, construction in the period of rapid population expansion and concentration, many of whom were recent immigrants, the town continued a history of erecting masonry, masonry schoolhouses for its young. School, uh, stopped being a, an elementary school in the 1980s, and now, and then housed the, uh, Webster Business, School Business Department Administration Offices until 2018. At 120 years old, the building was demolished in 2019. A financial institution now stands on its side. This cannot be allowed to happen again. Preservation is having the good sense to hold on to things that are well-designed, that link us with our past in a meaningful way, and that have plenty of good use left in them. I'm sorry if I took on a little too long here, but I just did want to get through that so you could understand what it is the commission is, to, uh, handle here with our preservation by. Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Hi, Donna Becker, 77 Bates Point Road. Just a couple of questions. Do we have any statistics on how many buildings in Webster are over 50 years old? And how many requests are to demolish buildings from us?
I could not answer how many are, are over 50 years old.
Because if it's over 50, it goes to the commission, correct?
That's correct, yes. Over 50 requires an application. That the building commissioner would then forward to the Historical Commission for review.
And why was 50 chosen?
Uh, that's a, that's a good point. Uh, the commission went over that, uh, to understand, and one of the reasons we chose 50 is that the first requirement for the National Register of Historical Places listing is that the property be at least 50 years old. So we use that as a guideline for our preservation bylaw.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator? Elaine Davis, 267 Thompson Road. Uh, many of you know me, I grew up here. I left, I came back seven years ago, and I am a member of the Historical Commission. You know, sometimes I think we're at a disadvantage in Massachusetts because we show up at these wonderful participatory meetings, participatory government, and it may be the first time we see a new bylaw or an amendment, and there's not a lot of time to look at it, and this is quite a long, um, bylaw. But, um, on Thursday night, maybe some of you were there, I went to the Slater Experience to hear John Rassett speak, and he taught, he gave us a trolley ride through Webster. And all the, uh, the pictures he showed are in Carla Manzi's book, if you have it. I have a lot of stickies on it, and those sticky show all the structures that are no longer there on the trolley route. My favorite is one that Ted didn't use, that's the Knowles. Some of you may remember Parody's funeral home. My grandparents were way up there. It was built in 1865, it's the Knowles, and, uh, by James Howe, and then, then later Gracius Slater took it over. It's now a parking lot and did lots. So, uh, we in Webster have, just have some serious thinking to do about, do we want to preserve our history, and what's the best way to do this? My house on Thompson Road would be caught in this net. It was built in the 1960s. What that means is if I wanted to demolish it, and some days when those Nor'easters come in with water in my house, it's an appealing thought. I would put my permit in, and the building commissioner would get that over to the Historical Commission, and in 30 days, I'm sure they would tell me, there's not significance here, and it could be demolished. Now, if they told me there was, I'd be ecstatic, and I would try to work with them through the rest of the process, which would then allow public comment and talks about whether it should be preserved. All this is, is an attempt to be a pause, to think about, is something historic? Right now, legally, we can't do that in Webster. If there is an Amos Bartlett, um, structure out there, forget it, it could be down tomorrow before we could do anything. So it's, it's just a matter of, if you have some better suggestions on this, you all have the right to make amendments, but I ask you to seriously think about this amendment. And in nine years, when we celebrate our 200th, I hope we're going to, when we celebrate our 200th anniversary, when that parade kicks off, it'll pass more than a donut shop and a gas station or a parking lot. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Uh, Mr. Moderator, just closing. Uh, this bylaw was established with the help of the Mass Historical Commission, so it's not anything we developed personally. Uh, we strongly request your support, uh, to approve this bylaw. Again, historic preservation is not about the past, but it's about the future. Thank you. Next one?
Mr. Moderator, according to both separately, um, from a comment that the woman just made, it's every single house, once it turns 50 years old, just five minutes falls into this. It's not, you're going around and determining old, really nice buildings, say like the Keller School, that really are structured in that historical world. It's just a Cape House that's just a random house that's 50 years old.
Yes, anything over 50 years old would just require the, uh, simple application that the commission will devise.
And in 30 days, you will give an answer.
Probably, I mean, if it's not historically significant.
But I mean the mass.
You know, no, we're not looking for, you know, two-bedroom, one.
Yeah, that's a, that's a massive, yeah. I just assumed it was buildings you had already determined were had historical value structural-wise, and then they would be there. Why isn't that being done?
Well, there is a list, but the list is, is, uh, ancient, by the lack of a better term. Uh, you could go on the Webster, or the Mass Historical Commission site, require what they call a atlas, a report, and, you know, you could go right into Webster, and you'll see probably over 400 properties that are listed, whether or not they're still there.
Yeah.
I don't know, because this is a pretty, uh, it's a pretty old document. We'll look to update that as we go along.
But there won't ever be an update where this application process won't be needed. Like, it'll just say X 55 years Main Street is historical, and therefore if they want to demolish it, it would go to this. It's just a 50-year generic mark.
The, the 50 years will stand as the, is the target for the application, strictly for the application.
It just seems a little overkill to me in basic residential houses to have to ask what to do with your own property, so, that's just my comment.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? If there being no further discussion, we'll open the article to a vote. All those in favor of the article, press one head. All those opposed, 2B. Voting is now open. Time of voting has expired. We'll post the results. 59 yes, 27 no. The article passes. Thank you, Ms. Adamopolis. Final article is Article 11, Citizens' Petition, and on advice of counsel, we declare Article 11 out of order. We have a motion that dissolved and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Both unanimous, motion is, the meeting is dissolved. Thank you very much for coming here tonight.